Welcome to the January 6, 2022, meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda will be called. The applicant will make his or her presentation. Commission members will ask questions, if any, and the members of the public can make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and for in opposition or against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, you'll hear a loud beep to indicate you have one minute left to speak, and at that point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium. We have one at the bottom, and we have a microphone roving. And speak into the microphone. Give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will then go into the deliberation session. In the deliberation session, commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a super near mary will vote in their stead unless both are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments, or PUDs. The planning commission makes only recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Reminder to all in the room to please turn off your cellphones or silence them at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones while speaking. Roll call. Myself, Jay Stubbs, present. Mr. Alan Cameron, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Mr. Carlos Gant, Ms. Surly Sessions, Mr. Taylor Atchison, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Scott Jones, Ms. Susan Carley, Mr. Kirk Matei. We have a quorum, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda of which there are eight items today. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Number one on the agenda, under the holdovers section, 1172 Elmira Street. Staff has recommended denial for the application. Is the applicant present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Trey Lee, 1172 Elmira Street.
Number one reads, "The subdivision would create substandard-sized lots, which would be in violation of the subdivision regulation and zoning ordinance."
The holdover was to have a meeting with neighbors and to submit a revised plat. Instead of three subdivided properties, it would just be two. So that's been done, submitted to the portal. And the meeting, I ended up typing up a letter, putting in all the neighbors' mailboxes. The only, I'm sorry, the only response or call that I got to it, I left my cell and my email, was Mr. Mitchell, and he was okay with the two subdivision. He just didn't want the three. And that was the only response that I've got, and I have a copy of the letter. I need to submit it to somebody to see or...
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please, staff.
The applicant contacted us earlier this week. The revised plat was uploaded after the reports were published, and the staff was not able to review the revisions to provide the commission some recommended conditions. But we did find where it was uploaded earlier this week. We would be more than agreeable to a holdover to the January 20th meeting.
Due to the nature of the timing and the review, mentioned comments from staff, are you okay with a holdover till January 20?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. So I just have to come back down to the 20th meeting?
Yep. But in the meantime, I would communicate with staff to make sure...
What sort of conditions or any, I'm just, some clarification on that. I'm not sure what conditions would be put on those properties.
Margaret.
I can't answer that. That's the reason why we need the holdover. Like you see with the other applications, we come up with conditions. Once we post those reports, again, recommended conditions will be available at that time for you to see and then be ready to respond to at the January 20th meeting.
I have a quick question for staff. Why was this denied in the beginning? Substandard lots are approved in this area of the city a lot based on historic lot sizes in the area.
It was the degree of substandard. There are no other lots of the sizes that they were proposing in the immediate area. Furthermore, the size of that site, by dividing it into three lots, creates a violation of R1 zoning.
Because there's too much?
There's, there would be too many dwellings on that size of property. It would be creating the violation.
Did we determine whether going to two would violate that zoning? Or last meeting, you were doing math in your head on the fly.
And I haven't got any better at it. You have that, but you also have the characteristics of the lots in the neighborhood and the historic district overlay.
What, question for the applicant. What's the proposal, so we know of the new lot design? Is it two lots facing Rapier or two lots facing Elmira?
My name's Daniel Clark. I actually made the application. I'm the surveyor. Address is 111 U.S. Highway 31, Spanish Fork. As you see, basically in that diagram there, we're just going to take out that lot line between one and two. We're going to go, you know, as close to the current residence that, as we can, which I believe is eight feet. And then we're going to, everything to the west of that will be one lot.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose that traditionally would face Rapier by the dimensions. But I don't know if that's a hard pass, a hard rule to ask to follow.
Thank you. No, I just, I guess I was just curious because of the lot sizes we approve in this area, but you're saying they're below our imaginary threshold or...
I wouldn't call it imaginary, but we have had, and it was outlined in the staff report, this site here was re-subdivided within the past few years. But the two houses were both on that one piece of property. All the subdivision did was put a lot line down the middle. It did not change what is on the ground. This property here has been subdivided as well, but again, the subdivision of that site, each lot was well above the size, the area of the three lots proposed for this site. You see other lots here, but again, the, they're basically split in two this way, going back from Rapier. While we will look at the proposal to put the lot line here, because you do have a structure already in place here, but you do not see in this block anything approaching the, the sizes that were proposed with dividing this site into three lots.
Yeah. I just do think as a corner lot, that that's a unique design, and if it was something they were planning on building on in a neighborhood that, you know, has some dense, close, houses very close to each other, I don't, I don't know why we're saying this because it doesn't appear in the general area, isn't something we can do.
Well, going back to the other issue of the zoning, by creating, taking one existing lot and creating three, you're putting three houses on it, and the overall property, it would not comply with R1 density. It would need a rezoning.
To R2?
Yes, at a minimum, minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clark, Mr. Lee. Then to item two, 1452 Government Street. We have a subdivision as well as a rezone. It's been recommended for tentative approval on the subdivision based on seven conditions. The rezone is also recommended for approval with three conditions. Is the applicant present? State your name and address, please, sir.
Bruce Smith, Coles Murphy Glover, 457 St. Michael Street.
Are you in agreement with the conditions from the recommendation on tentative approval for both subdivision and rezone?
We are with a few exceptions. The 25-foot dedication along Etheridge Street for the residential lot, we would like to eliminate that so that we can retain the existing size of the R1 lot.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please do, Margaret.
Staff is in agreement with this request. We still, and the applicant is in agreement as stated, we still request the dedication along Lot A. That lot with this project would be commercially zoned, and it is going to generate more traffic onto Etheridge Street. Now, they have configured the site plan so that traffic entering the site from Etheridge, it's right in. Traffic exiting the site to Etheridge cannot take a right and go north, doing everything they possibly can to keep commercial traffic from extending north along Etheridge Street. The residential lot here would remain R1 and could only be developed with a home. Using the historic district overlay, as you can see, the, the home to the north, applying the, the historic district overlay standards, the new home could be built in line. And if this portion of Etheridge Street were ever to be developed to full city standards, that existing home to the north would be taken.
Margaret, does the proposed setback for the residential lot, is it basically effectively lined up with the, the existing house?
That is correct. This is within the old Dolphin Way Historic District. The historic district overlay standards prevail, and that would require that the proposed home on this lot be in line with this existing dwelling. That is a really long way of saying we are in agreement with the applicant's request with a setback only shown on the proposed residential lot.
Mr. Smith, good with that? You had a couple others, maybe?
Yeah, just one other thing, going back to trying to help control traffic in the area. And, and this is more so kind of on behalf of the, the neighbors along Etheridge Street as well, but it was kind of proposed and brought up at one time as far as maybe trying to make Etheridge Street one-way south from the property, the north property line of Lot A, which you see right there, going south on Etheridge Street so that you could not make a right-hand turn onto Etheridge Street from Government Street. And then that way, anybody leaving, leaving the Cindy Haber Center would also be turning left on the Etheridge Street, going to Government Street, just to kind of help the influx of traffic that they're seeing in the area. We are okay with that if, if that's something that the city would allow.
Has traffic had a chance to communicate?
So, changing a street from two-way to one-way requires city council approval, so that is separate action that must be undertaken either by the applicant or whomever wants to, and, and, you know, go proceed with it.
You understand that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Other, other items? You're good?
That's it. We're in agreement with everything else. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I have a quick question for staff. I see in the rezoning that y'all recommended the rezoning based on changing conditions and a need for the increase in sites available to business, but along this corridor, we've got, I would say, a substantial amount of large parcels with vacant commercial buildings. What, what brought you to that conclusion that we need an increase of commercial sites?
We usually, it's a combination of things. One, if you look at this immediate area, where, where fortunately, we're developed with what we have commercial. We do have, you do have vacancies, though, in this particular center. But as you look at this area of Government Street over the long term, you have had changes in conditions in the area. You have Walgreens, you have Dairy Queen, you have the former Rite Aid.
Yeah, vacant, right on.
You have the, you know, there have been changing conditions. If that is something that the commission and the city council do not feel has, holds true, that may factor in your decision and your vote on this application. I do need to draw to the commission's attention as well. You do have one comment in opposition to this application, and they did reference some similar comments regarding the traffic circulation and making Etheridge Street one-way.
Does anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Two, 1452 Government Street? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? We'll move on to Agenda Item Three, new subdivision applications, 5148 Todd Acres Drive. It's been recommended for tentative approval with eight conditions. Is the applicant present? You're in agreement with everything? Is anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Three? Is there anyone else here to speak against Agenda Item Three? Move on to number four, 2443 River Forest Drive. Recommended for tentative approval, subject to seven conditions. Applicant present? All good? Anyone else here to speak for River Forest Drive? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition or against the application? Moving on to number five, 1513 Stewart Road. Recommended for tentative approval, ten conditions. All good? Applicant present? All good? Is there one that, here to speak for 1513 Stewart Road? Is there one here to speak in opposition or against? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next section of the agenda. New planned unit development applications, PUD. Agenda Item Six, 1867 Pritchard Avenue West and 10110 Joel Court. Been recommended for approval with findings of fact and some conditions. Is the applicant present? Are there any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have before you a letter from Councilmember Penn, the representative for this district, and he is requesting a holdover until the commission's January 20th meeting. I believe the applicant's in agreement with this request.
Are you in agreement, sir? He is in agreement. Agenda Item Seven, group applications, 4251 Bitten Spur Road. We have a subdivision, been recommended for tentative approval with 14 conditions, and a PUD, been recommended for approval with 14 conditions. Is the applicant present?
Patrick Garsteky, Coles Murphy Glover, 457 St. Michael Street.
Richard Inge, 118 North Royal Street, developer.
Do you have some comments?
Well, so, um, I have, I guess, condition number one, number two, we want to talk about. And number one is regarding the 30-foot dedication from the center line of Bitten Spur. When the lot to the northeast, 4255 Bitten Spur Road, was subdivided immediately adjacent to this property, in 1998, they only required 10 feet of right-of-way dedication. And that's what we've also shown on our revised, or submitted preliminary subdivision plat. And so we'd like to match that as well, instead of the 30-foot from the center line of Old Shell. And condition number two, regarding the 50-foot right-of-way of the private drive, given the nature and location of the development, we don't see a need for the 50-foot right-of-way for the private drive as it would reduce the lot sizes significantly. Create a higher density of houses within the subdivision results in pushing setbacks to their limits on all sides of the lots, and may even require a different zoning change to allow for an increase in the building site coverage. We reviewed some other lots and subdivisions within the area. These would be the Gates subdivision, Spring Hill Trace, Savannah Trace, Fielding Place. The latest was Ostile Estate subdivision. The Gates is a 40-foot right-of-way private drive. Spring Hill Trace is a 27-foot ingress/egress easement. Savannah Trace is no right-of-way ingress/egress easement. Fielding Place, 30-foot wide right-of-way. And Ostile State was a 20-foot wide ingress/egress done in 2019, I believe. So we currently have a right-of-way of 36 feet in two different areas. In other areas, we have 64 and 62, which is greater than the 50-foot required. So we feel that due to the nature and intent of this design for the subdivision, that the 36 minimum in those two areas is still sufficient. And I'll let Richard speak about the development.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Chairman, Planning Commission. I just wanted to paint just a little picture on the deal. I mean, we've been working on this for eight months. We have met with architects, landscape architects, neighbors. We've worked with Patrick. I mean, we have put a lot of time and energy into this, and basically what we're catering to is a demand for the baby boomer generation. There's just not many lots in Spring Hill with my mother's buddies that have asked me to look over the last few years. There's nothing available. That had us searching in this property. We love the location, the size of 2.74 acres. It's, front's a thoroughfare. It's right down from a major thoroughfare on Old Shell. It's by the country club. It fits perfect for what we're looking for. But again, we're wanting high-end, and let me just paint this for you. Brick wall on Bitten Spur, sidewalk, nice landscaping, gated, full-time gated entrance, similar to that, like a Holland Park, with pavers at the entrance, no asphalt, all concrete and pavers, paver sidewalks, high-end, or retention pond, we're going to turn that into a wet pond with fountain walking trails around it. We have engaged an architect. The main thing I thought that we felt like just holding our market was we have engaged an architect who we have as our exclusive guy, local, high-end architect, who's designed a house plan for each lot. So when you pick a lot, you have all four elevations and a house plan, and we're letting them be able to customize a little bit of the floor plan. But that, we feel like where the, all of the houses will be consistent with consistent high-end materials. Every house is going to have the first floor. Again, it's kind of, we're, we're catering to the older generation where everything will be on the first floor, all master, a big screen porch with a fireplace. Every house will have a courtyard, shared driveways, which we felt like was the creative part of the deal, which I know is important. But again, lots of demand, lots of interest. I would like to field any opposition because we've met with the neighbors. I want to accommodate everybody. We're not trying to upset anybody. I basically want to come in here and do something good for the community. I'm not looking to cause trouble. And I'll be glad to come back up if anybody comes to speak. But I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Garsteky, Mr. Inge. Before we move on to any, anyone for, Ms. Staff, have any comments on the 10-foot and the 50-foot?
On the 10-foot along Bitten Spur, I believe he stated that was from the 90s, and so that'll take a while for us to research as to whether or not that was the standard at the time and what the right-of-way was shown as. The reason for the additional request for dedication is because Bitten Spur does not have curb and gutter streets, so a wider right-of-way is stipulated. Regarding the other subdivisions that they referenced and the size of the private street, the private street width, private street width standards were incorporated into the subdivision regulations in the mid to late 90s. Almost everyone that I was hearing him name, such as the, the Gates across the street, Fielding Place, and I believe it's Savannah Trace, those were all developed prior to the adoption of our private street standards, which are intended to apply to unique developments, including something of these, of this nature. If the commission looks to waive those standards, we would need to figure out what all subdivisions, sections, there would need to be a waiver of. Have I answered most of the questions so far?
I think so.
Okay.
Alan?
How was, how was 50 feet arrived at? If you had all these others that, how did you arrive at 50 feet when all these others were...
There was, there was actually a committee formed to analyze private streets, and based on my really old recollection, part of the reason for those minimum standards was because if in the future the street was turned over for public maintenance, minimum, the, the adequate width would be there. You know, a street, you can go in and repave it and get it up to city standards, but if you don't have the geometry within which to do that, there is no hope. Frankly, that is one of the, was one of the drivers, as I recall, for those private street minimum standards to go into place because the city was also being asked at the time to take over what were private streets for public maintenance.
Have any of those others been turned over to public streets?
I know, I can think of one of them off of Cody Road that has been. You do have, but like I said, you've got some of these, as you can see here, where the streets are substandard, they're still privately owned.
Margaret, I think I heard the applicant say...
Margaret, I think I heard the applicant say the streets would be pavered streets. Did I hear that correctly?
I heard no asphalt, pavers at the entrance, and concrete.
Okay. Well, I just, I bring that up because normally it's the city engineer that's making the recommendation to the city council to accept streets. And so in those cases with that, we would never make that recommendation for them to accept. City council could act on their own, but the engineering department certainly would not recommend it. So almost without question, those streets would remain private. And I think the question that I've really got, you know, in my city engineer role, it goes to the right-of, I'm sorry, goes to the right-of-way question, and then the width question is, can you get all those utilities in there and it fit? I mean, that's, that's the problem. I think when we see these narrower widths, and I think the 50-foot width generally lets you get the water line, the sewer line, the power line, the cable line. So I mean, I'm hoping that the engineers, I mean, I'm sure y'all have had those conversations. Obviously, it looks like y'all, y'all have done a bunch of work, but that's a real, real tight, tight piece of real estate that you've got there to squeeze all that stuff underground, which I'm sure in a development like this, everything would be going underground. So can you, can you, can you speak to that a little bit, just how, how much in detail y'all thought about the utilities? Because, I mean, I've personally done one of these, and, you know, we, we did do a 50-foot right-of-way, and it's slap full, you know, of underground utilities. So I just want your thoughts on that.
Yep. So really, the storm sewer and sanitary sewer would be on the west property line at that 320 mark. But the utilities coming to each house, for the most part, will also utilize the shared driveway area. You can see there, there's plenty of room in between the houses at each shared driveway. And that's really where we would like to plan and kind of hide the utilities, the meters and that kind of stuff by the garages using that shared driveway.
It's just tight. I mean, I might say it can't be done, but just, I'm just letting y'all know that. I mean, that's a tight footprint to squeeze all of that, all of that stuff in there. And, you know, I know firsthand knowledge of one where we couldn't get a gas line to the, to the second built house without easement being given, you know, across property lines to get there. And my other comment for you would be just because I know this, this whole general area of Spring Hill, the drainage is generally not as good as we would like it, especially with our rain events. I think the comments were 100-year detention with a two-year event. I would strongly, strongly encourage y'all as engineer of record and then the developer to get out here and look at this thing in a rain event, see where that water's going, and it might be that you need to have some more common area or detention area longitudinally along the property so that you can best reproduce what Mother Nature is already doing. A point discharge, unless you've got a closed drainage system to go to, generally will not end up with a happy downstream neighbor. So you need to do everything you can to reproduce a sheet flow discharge from a, from a site like this. Because I mean, you're going, you know, from hardly any impervious area to almost complete impervious area. So if you've got places, you know, where you can slow down water in there, I would, again, certainly encourage that because we just got all too many of these developments like that where whoever's downstream takes the, takes the brunt of it.
Yeah. So the, the common area in the front where the parking is, that's going to be those grass pave, pavers for a pervious surface. There will be no sheet flow exiting the site. In the, let's call it the bottom left corner is the existing junction box that will tie into the city stormwater with the 100-year, two-year.
Okay, good. So you do have a, you do have a city drain to tie to.
Yep. Which is more stringent than a normal city, you know, tier-two land disturbance permit or tier-one. So we will tie into that so there will not be sheet flow. And, oh, so we've definitely looked at the drainage a lot, and actually, there's two junction boxes back there. And between the two junction boxes is a broken pipe now, and I think that's causing issues right now. So if they have flooding issues right now, it's likely caused by that. At the top of it's completely gone. So we would fix that in this development. Also, on Bitten Spur at, I think it's the 4245 address, there's an inlet right off Bitten Spur with a slab top, and it only allows water to come in on one side of the four sides of it. We would like to talk with the city and right-of-way and work to get that flowing a little better, where it's actually doing something. So there's, there's definitely some issues, and we'd like to address them and make it better for everybody.
Well, I think with regards to that right-of-way along Bitten Spur, I think I'm less concerned about a, you know, a 10-foot or a 30-foot, it's just so that everything that needs to be there can fit. And that being the sidewalk, so I mean, I don't know, Margaret, how we can characterize a comment that says, you know, a dedication along the right-of-way sufficient to accommodate the sidewalks and any other improvements. Because it is, it's very, very tight through there. Those inlets that you talk about that are in the road, they don't hold up well because they're in the road, and it's because it is all squeezed in there so tight, not enough with inadequate right-of-way. Maybe a comment that they would work with the engineering department to establish what that dedication would be. If they've got heartburn about the 30 feet from the center line, which might only be that we need 28, and I realize maybe inches matter in a situation like this, 10 feet's probably not enough either. I'm guessing that's probably a standard from days gone by.
Well, you know, staff would be looking at a minimum of 25 feet from center line so that you at least get, you know, 50 feet total. But if you're wanting to analyze and potentially get more than that, but not necessarily all the way up to 30 feet, because you're only talking about five feet.
Yeah. What we find sometimes in this, in this, well, not just this part, but the road's just not in the center of the right-of-way.
Yes.
So that, that ends up, it might be that we, that we don't need, that 24 feet would be enough. And I suggest, I mean, I presume in looking at their drawing, a foot makes a big difference for them. So, you know, I would hope with the survey that hopefully they've already picked up, we might be able to see that. And it just, it'd be, let's say, a minimum of 25 or variable as determined by the staff.
Or the city engineer.
The city engineer. We can, we can leave it at that. I just want the things, I mean, I want the pieces that need to be there to fit, you know, based on the built, right, built, built infrastructure. That's, that ends up being the problem. If we just do a hard 30 feet, well, 30 feet actually might not be enough. There might be a spot there that you need 31, but the rest of it might only need 20, 24.
The more you speak, the more I think, as much as I hate to load up the January 20th agenda, I'm thinking a holdover to get a little more analysis and communication between engineering and the applicant so that we have some definitive information for the Commission to act upon.
Have a, have a problem with that? I mean, I think y'all understand, we, we want to be as generous as we can with the space, because I mean, the difference between the 10-foot and the 30-foot might mean the difference of something not, not fitting there.
Can I make a comment real quick before we ask them? If we were to do that, would it be possible to move forward with the rezoning to start their timeline with city council and leave the engineering issues to meld on? Because I would presume that if the rezoning doesn't get carried, it kind of changes.
The only thing that's given me a hesitation is if the dedication, especially the discussion regarding the private street design and the minimum standards alters the lot sizes whereby you may need a different zoning classification, R3 rather than R2 due to the density like you have across the street at the gates. That, that's my only concern. While I am very cognizant of timelines and people needing to keep to their, their schedule, I get concerned with us missing something and it creating a bigger time issue.
It sounds like the city engineer might be reasonable about the street width as long as they can make it all work.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my primary comment really go to number one. And Margaret, if you think this would suffice, say with the note, to provide 25 feet or as directed by the city engineer, you know, I want to work with these guys and just see cross-sections that shows it'll fit and, you know, don't want to hold them up.
25 feet would be fine.
I would really appreciate y'all strongly considering letting us move forward. If we have any other questions, I know we've been very patient trying to get everything submitted, and yes, everything is timed.
Have y'all, when you've done your survey, did you actually pick up the road out there? So you have a, you know where that hall is relative, so we can look at it in a couple of minutes and see, see, you know, that the pieces and parts will fit where they, where they need to fit.
I mean, the difference in 10-foot dedication and the, and the 25 is like a two feet, so we can, we can do that.
The issue with the 50 feet inside are these house footprints granted there in the preliminary stages, but every house is already kind of designed. And if we lost, like you said, two feet's a big difference.
Well, with it being a private street, that's going to be your problem. That's not going to be the city's problem. So that's the only reason I wanted to point that out to you because it, you know, you're going to have to deal with and you're.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Right.
We're, we're flexible. We want to work with everybody, but I would really appreciate y'all considering getting this work over.
Am I right, Nick? If it's not the city standards and then, let's say, something happened and they wanted to turn it over to the city, it would just be disallowed, right?
Well, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be recommended by my office. Certainly, the city council can act, not on my recommendation, but historically in the last, how many ever years, the city council typically does not accept the street. But again, I don't think that's what they're, I don't think that's what they're pursuing.
Yeah, right.
One thing we haven't addressed with this, what if somebody parks on the street and then you've got to get a garbage truck or emergency vehicle in there? I see the hammerhead, that's okay. But if you've got somebody parked on the street, is there ample width? No, in your development in here, is there ample area?
The city garbage truck will not be going down that street.
Private trash pickup, no city garbage.
What about emergency vehicles?
Yes. We've been talking with fire department. We have a 20-foot minimum lane and then 24-foot wide when it's a two-lane road. But the hammerhead's 20-foot wide.
At that parking area, I believe, we're going to have a legal spot where everybody needs to mail, we're not going to have any mailboxes. And we're going to have a landscape part of the H area where everybody's yard is cut the same day, part of the news.
I think for the sake of my fellow commissioners, I think the difference is on a normal city right-of-way, as many of the utilities as possible are in the right-of-way. In this scenario, most of those utilities are going to be underneath the street. So if something, if something breaks, if a water line breaks or sewer line breaks, that private street's going to be dug up.
Correct.
And be, be paid for. So I have no objection to the narrower width. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Anyone else here to speak for? There are two slots for this agenda item. All right. Thank you, Mr. Inge, Mr. Garsteki. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, as they are making their way down, I want to bring to the Commission's attention, you each have at your seat a letter of opposition signed by multiple families from the area.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. Name and address, please, sir.
Sure. My name's Andrew Grunsted, and I live at 4245 Bitten Spur Road, which is adjacent to the property. Never done this before, so I wrote up a little speech. Dear Planning Commissioners, Julia and I first moved to Mobile 20 years ago from Chicago. You could have moved to any city in the United States, given our backgrounds, but we chose Mobile primarily because we valued the harmony of a small city. We have enjoyed raising our children here, and I believe anyone who's met us would tell you that we have contributed greatly to the Mobile community. We have good relationships with our neighbors. Those who know us well would also tell you we are very conflict avoidant. We have no interest in being here today and wish that we weren't. We have no conflicts or personal conflicts with the developer, and we respect all the many different people who are willing to invest in our city. However, we are compelled to be here today to protect the privacy and value of our home. We believe that the current home, we bought our current home almost 10 years ago, and we're well aware that it was surrounded by R1 homes on all sides. Mrs. Ruby Del Dorland, our neighbor who lived on the property in question much of that time, was a wonderful woman, and we spent many conversations with her in her front yard. The proposed rezoning would replace her one home with 12 homes. That's one home to 12 homes. That is a dramatic change in density and most certainly changed the nature and character of our neighborhood. I believe this fact is self-evident to anyone who comes to our property, and invite any of you to come walk our property and see for yourself. I could cover all the density issues that we've shared with you in our letter, but I gather you're familiar with them. They range from landscaping to lighting to noise to traffic to water flow, among other things. As neighbors, we will have to live with the density impact. The developer will not. While the staff report says the developer has not provided a reason for rezoning, as is required, their report supposes the reason might be reclassification of the land is necessary and desirable. As we said in our letter, we as neighbors do not believe that is necessary, and we as neighbors do not believe it is desirable. While the developer made a last-minute push to undercut our ability to secure legal counsel today, we, we went ahead and read the Mobile Court of Ordinances on our own, and we note it says, "The minimum sizes set out below shall serve as guidelines. New districts of smaller size may be created where unusual conditions or circumstances justify them. A proposed new R2 district should contain at least four acres of gross area." This property is only 2.7 acres. We wonder what the unusual conditions are that justify rezoning this property. What about R1 acre lot? Can we also rezonate R2? Surely, the four-acre guiding principle exists so folks can purchase a home with confidence in an existing R1 neighborhood. Shouldn't most homeowners feel secure that their neighbor's property will not be rezoned against the neighborhood's wishes and in the absence of any particular justification? Let me finish with this. Julia and I are in favor of prudent development in our neighborhood and in Mobile. We have asked the developer if he could lower the density of what he has proposed to build, and he has not budged once on anything but 12 houses. We and our neighbors support the development of a new home on the property or even multiple new homes, so long as the developer works within the existing R1 designation imposed on the rest of us. This would be, in our view, harmonious development. We are not here today making an extraordinary request to this Commission. The developer is. A 12-fold increase in the density of the property is dramatic and unnecessary. We respectfully request that the Planning Commission deny the zoning change to this property. Thank you. My wife is also here, but I'm speaking for both of us.
Thank you, Mr. Grunsted. We have three more slots for opposition.
Good afternoon.
Name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Gabe Bolton. I live at 5A Crossway Drive. My property is to the south and backs up to the Dorland property. And just for, for the record, we just recently learned about this project over the Christmas break, so it's still very new to us, and we're still trying to kind of figure out what it is that's going on and how it's going to affect us. My wife and I chose to invest in this location because of the lot sizes and the distance between the houses, because it afforded us the privacy that we desired. When it came time to build our home, we decided to build further back on our lot because we felt like this would give us and our neighbors more space. This is a decision we are now questioning. But let me be clear, our opposition doesn't stem from development. In fact, we're pro-development, and I would love to see something really nice on this property. This looks really nice, you know, from what, talking to Richard and what I've seen online. Our opposition is to the scale and density of the proposal. We even thought one day that Dorland property might be subdivided, but never did we think that a 2.7-acre lot would be rezoned and then turned into 12 houses. There are things that have us very concerned, like all the things you guys have already mentioned, like Mr. Amberger talking about the drainage and, and all that kind of stuff, stormwater runoff, traffic, noise. However, our biggest concern is the proximity to our house and the privacy and space we would give up if this passes. Andrew Grunsted mentioned this in his letter to the committee, but I would point to the city of Mobile's own Code of Ordinance, Section 64-3, Section 5, under sizes of new districts. New districts of smaller size may be created where unusual conditions and circumstances justify them. This is what he was saying just a second ago. However, it goes on to state that a proposed new R2 district should contain at least four acres of gross area. To my knowledge, no one has cited an unusual circumstance that would justify putting 12 homes on a 2.7-acre lot that backs up to R1, an R1 subdivision. So it kind of begs the question, should rezoning occur every time there's a decent-sized property that comes on the market? Does that make it okay? Does that make it okay? I, I hope not. We also have concerns regarding stormwater, drainage, and runoff. And I don't have to tell anyone, it sounds like everybody's familiar with how the water accumulates in Mobile. This area is no different in our fears, that if you take trees and shrubs and undergrowth out and replace it with concrete and houses, that water has nowhere to go and nowhere to be absorbed. Our properties already deal with rain and stormwater issues, and, and part of it may come from the busted drain line, I don't know. I think the city has been out there and they, they've seen that, and so if nothing's been done, I'm not sure, but I do know that we have issues further back in that line than where that, that, that breakage may, may be at. The drop-off from Bitten Spur to the back of the property is substantial, and it would act as a funnel, sending everything to the back of the property where our house is abut. A retention pond may help. You know, I'm sure studies have been done, but it wouldn't capture everything. This is a serious issue and one that a study can't always accurately predict. And like Mr. Amberger said, I would encourage the city engineers and the planners to, to go out there during a rainstorm. But I've got video that I can send to you guys, uh, during a storm and the amount of water that backs up on properties around there, including my own. So I would just like to reiterate, we are, we are pro-development. We wanna see great things developed in the city and within Spring Hill. We don't question the quality. I know Richard will do a bang-up job, and everything looks great. It's simply a matter of scale and density. We wanna see that property with great neighbors and pretty houses and beautiful architecture. We just don't want it right on top of it. And I doubt if any of you would either. So thank you for your time and consideration. I would also ask that, um, like was mentioned earlier, um, since we did all just learn about this, um, over the Christmas break, that if we could have time to maybe, um, organize a little bit and poll some, some more folks in the community to see if it's something that they would, um, just get their thoughts on it, um, and to see if there are other any options, uh, that would be, that would be great. So I would ask, um, you know, to have that pushed back to the, the later meeting in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Real quick, you mentioned your property. I, I know where you live. Will you direct Margaret with a red pointer which one yours is?
All right.
Right there?
Uh, yeah, that one right there.
All right.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Is the developer amenable to meeting with residents in the next two weeks? Are, are you amenable to meeting with the neighbors for the next two weeks?
Is there anyone?
The other question I've got, and one of the bullet points in the letter that we've been given, says that there's further reductions in lot sizes have been contemplated in the final layout. Were those submitted with a, a lesser density of homes? And if there is a lesser dens- density, would that be able to be maintained in R-one zone? Have you seen any plans to the staff like that? Do, do those plans exist? Have, have y'all looked at that from the developer's side?
No, I think maybe what that's referring to is we originally submitted this as, uh, part of the Spring Hill, uh, village overlay, uh, general center, neighborhood district or sub-district, which actually allows a seventy percent, seventy percent, uh, density. And that was how all our pre-op meetings went with the city. We're under that zoning, and it was a mistake because we're actually one lot off with, um, I think the Grunstedts' house from that overlay that's, uh, dashed on there. And so we, we did revise it to the R-two.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this agenda item?
Hey, I'm Neil McDonald. I'm at fifty-six Wimbledon Drive West. I'm in the southwest, I'm the property that backs up to the southwest, uh, bit of this one, one more ever? Sorry, other way, yep, that's, that's us. So we're the furthest house from this development, um, of the neighbors who have all kind of written this letter. Um, but we moved here two years ago. Um, I, I will say the big things that my husband and I both are worried about, one is the storm drainage, which they've talked about extensively. Um, I've walked back there into the back corner of my property, uh, where it comes in with that property line, and I've seen that drainage system is destroyed right now. It needs to be addressed, obviously. Um, our neighbors to the west of us, they already experienced some water problems from storm, like big storms, sometimes not so big. Um, our house has yet to be affected by that, yet, and I say yet because that's something we're worried about. Um, the other thing is privacy along with our neighbors. We are displeased to see, um, twelve houses going on a less than three-acre lot, um, backing up to our houses, which are on, I mean, we're just shy of an acre. Uh, most of our neighbors are about the same size, um, as that. So we do just wanna say that we're opposed to this and disappointed in this, um, proposal.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. There's one more slot for opposition. Is there anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item eight.
You wanna ask if the developer has any rebuttal to anything?
Repeat that, Doug.
The developer has a right to-
That's right, thank you. Mr. Inge or Mr. Garseki, would you like to address any of the concerns that have been brought up in the previous three speakers of opposition? Which we heard, density, guidelines from R-one to R-two, drainage, and privacy.
Well, I guess what I wanted to say was, again, we're just trying to put a high-end, safe community that is in high demand in Spring Hill. We're not looking to upset anybody. These folks are friends of mine, family friends, I know all of them and respect them. And I just want everyone to know, we met with both of the property owners on the sides on November eighteenth. I sat in their dining room and went and knocked on the convent, and they invited my partner and I in, and we laid this out for everyone. The convent thought it was wonderful, had no issues. I understand things change with the other property owner. I respect them, but I just want everyone to know that we handled everything upfront and properly, and had I got negative feedback then, we could've pulled back some, but since then, we've gone all in. And the other property owners on the back end, I've talked to every one of them and asked for meetings, they did not feel they needed one, and I just, we will work with them. I've talked to them about fencing, we're building a perimeter fence. If we needed eight-foot fence, I'm fine with that. If we needed to do additional landscape buffering, we're open to discussing that. We're open to discussing spotlights in the rear to avoid privacy with that. We, we're, we're being amenable and trying to help whatever we can to keep everyone happy. I mean, that's the main thing I want everyone to know, is that we're open book, and if we don't develop this and somebody else comes in, they might not be as easy to work with. They could go build big old houses in there and not have any architectural restrictions. So I just want everybody to keep that in consideration, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts. And I don't know if Patrick, the speaker, has a moment regarding engineering. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Inge. Thank you, Doug. Moving on to agenda item eight, and a reminder, we'll go to the deliberations of each agenda item after this final item. One sixty-two and one eighty-six East Drive subdivision and PUD, uh, it's been recommended for, subdivision's been recommended for tentative approval with twenty conditions, and then a PUD under the same with findings of fact as well as twenty-one conditions. The applicant present, are you good with all of those? Is anyone else here to speak for agenda item eight? Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition or against agenda item eight? One sixty-two and one eighty-six East Drive. Seeing none.
I got one question.
Go ahead, Scott.
If we're the developer, is there gonna be access to Center Drive, or is that closed off to Center Drive?
If I may-
Yep.
-in compliance with the consent order and as shown on this plat, no. There will be no direct access to Center Drive.
Okay. And that's gonna be in writing? Okay.
And Margaret, I have a, a comment, too. We need to make certain that the, I'm not sure if that was captured in here, but no drainage needs to go towards Center Drive either. I mean, it looks like from their preliminary layout, everything is going, going east, but no drainage should go towards Center Drive either. If that's, comment's not in there, I'd like to, I'd like to add that comment.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm very single task. Uh, Mr. Jones, condition number five on the subdivision specifically prohibits access to Center Drive, even from those residential lots. Mr. Amberger, uh, unless that is reflected in one of the engineering comments, and I'm not sure, we may need, just to be safe, add that as a condition.
Got anything that addresses, addresses, uh, that, George?
Is any drainage going to East Drive?
Drainage to Center Drive?
Yes, drainage to Center Drive is a-
We don't have any information of, of where they're proposing drainage.
Well, it looks like their, their layout shows retention ponds on the, on the front of the east side. I just want, we just, we do need to include that. Center Drive is a, cities, cities involved in that downstream with some other issues.
I think the applicant's representative would like to address that.
Hey, uh, yeah, just real quick, Nick, if we do something like that, could we put a note that if there is direct, already, direct discharge to Center Drive, that it be allowed? And any future, we just compensate for that? I mean, I, I know we're getting technical here, I just don't have the, a good feel for what the topo truly is. I believe everything slopes very hard to East Drive, but you, you know, just trying to come up with some creative there that gives us, gives the engineer, who will be Bethel Engineering, an option there to accommodate.
I think, I think you're correct. I think that it does slope east, but I wanna make sure that that's a certain, even roof, rooftop drains, you know, potentially changing the flow, uh, which, we just need to make sure we accomplish that, because Center Drive does not have improved drainage at the end of it, uh, so-
Yeah, there's no drainage or anything there.
Any, any little extra water there is not, is not good, so it definitely needs to be, uh, somehow or another captured in a note that no drainage shall be, uh, directed toward Center Drive.
How about no, no additional runoff to the Center Street drainage system?
That's correct.
Any further comments on agenda item eight? At this time, we'll close the public hearing session and open the deliberation session for the commissioners. Moving back to agenda item one, one-one-seven-two, Elmira Street, in discussions of public hearing. Consensus was a holdover to January twentieth?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes to hold over until January twentieth. Agenda item two, one-four-five-two, Government Street, subdivision and rezone. It was recommended for tentative approval with conditions on both items. We'll take them separately. And there was discussion on dedication distance? So for the subdivision, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations and requiring a dedication only along the commercial lot, uh, and then with a setback for the residential lot to match the adjacent, uh, uh, parcel to the north.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the rezone, also recommended for approval, subject to conditions, entertain a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a comment. I do not believe there's a, a need for this type of office space in this historic area. I think a B-one, single-use, eight-thousand-square-foot office with a sea of parking lot abutting a residential historic area is a, a bad use for the area. It doesn't add to the fabric of the community at all, and I think the rezoning should be denied.
Let me ask a question. The, uh, conditions for rezoning mention voluntary use restrictions as submitted. Have they been submitted? Do we have those yet?
We do, they, um-
Or they were, or were stated in the report verbatim. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware of them.
We have a motion on the floor for denial of the rezone from R-three to B-one?
Jay, hold on, we, we'll read y'all the vol-
Okay.
We might be reading them, but we'll make sure y'all are aware of them.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Because the fir- the first condition under the rezoning references voluntary use restrictions. If there's a page of them, I'm not gonna ask that they be read. Oh, there's the whole page.
Yes, um, but I will give you-
The highlights?
Yes, uh, prohibited uses, accessory dwelling units, retail of any type, antique spothecary aquarium, automotive parking facility, bed and breakfast, broadcast communication facility, massage therapy. I'm starting to gloss down the alphabet. Uh, zoo, trailer, tennis center, et cetera. B-one, essentially, it's going to be an office only. B-one, however, does allow multifamily, which is what the property is zoned now.
Mar- Margaret, those are the uses that were not allowed?
That is correct.
Point being that the existing R-three multifamily does not allow office. You mentioned that B-one allows multifamily, but the point is that R-three existing does not allow an office use.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, you have a motion on the table to deny.
Correct. Does the motion stand? Taylor?
The motion stands.
Okay. Is there a second? Seeing none? We'll still entertain a motion for the rezone, R-three to B-one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a properly motioned and seconded for the rezone from R-three to B-one? Any discussion?
What I'm seeing in, in the proposal is they are trying to keep this property to the, the character that it's there, maintaining the oak trees, et cetera. I have heard comment on this, that they have, the developers have talked to the neighbors, and they would rather see this development go in as stated than see a future apartment complex go in. So with what I'm seeing here, um, in the conversations that I've, I've had with the developer, I'm, I'm okay with it, as long as they maintain what is in this proposal and maintain the historical character of that area.
Margaret, may I ask a question? Is there any use that has not been restricted, other than an office building or a multifamily unit?
None that I can think of, because B-one pretty much is an office only. Yes, it would allow, allow, you know, like massage therapy and an antique store-
And all that's restricted.
But those are excluded. Um, as we stated, the property's zoned R-three, which by right would allow over twenty-five units on this site as an R-three use. Uh, also, just following up on what Mr. Jones stated, this was heard at the commission's meeting last month, and you did have a lot of neighborhood support for this application. You do have some concerns, and you have that letter in front of you.
We have a motion on the floor that's been properly moved and seconded for rezoned R-three and B-one. We'll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
The motion passes for rezone. New subdivision application, item three, fifty-one forty-eight, Todd Acres Drive, recommended for tentative appro- approval. The applicant was present and is good with all conditions. Entertain a motion?
Motion subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Item Four, 2443 River Forest Drive, recommended for tentative approval.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item Five, 1513 Stewart Road, recommended for tentative approval with ten conditions. Applicant was present.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. New planned unit development applications, number six, 1867 Pritchard Avenue West and 10110 Joel Court. And discussions, it was recommended for holdover to January 20th.
Move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to hold over until January 20th passes. Group applications, number seven, 4251 Bit and Spur Road subdivision, as well as PUD. We'll take these and zone, we'll take these separately.
Want to make a comment before we get into the details of the engineering? As far as the rezoning goes, I've noticed in the letter submitted by one of the neighbors, and I do appreciate the neighbors being here and their, and their voice and their fear as a lot is contemplated to being developed that has been mostly vacant. When your houses were purchased, there's a comment in the letter stating that the population in Mobile has shrank over the last twenty-year period, and that is a crisis that we're in in Mobile, losing population to west of us and east to us. And it's innovative local developers like this providing creative solutions to our housing problem that I think needs to be championed and celebrated. And we need to understand the housing crisis we're in with the C's of R1 developments that we have. We're going to see this, and I hope we see this a lot more, in a good thoughtful design, which I believe this is, and I think it's a good development and providing housing options for people that live in this community that are wanting to downside out of larger houses into smaller houses that they can maintain and opening up larger properties that could potentially house families moving to this city and taking new jobs and having properties available for that influx of population that we so badly need. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Again, we'll take these separately. For the subdivision, it's recommended for tentative approval with fourteen conditions. There was some discussion?
I'll make that motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, revising note number one to require twenty-five-foot setback or as directed by the city engineer and eliminating note number two.
And in so doing, you would need to waive Section E2C of the subdivision regulations, which stipulates that minimum fifty-foot right-of-way.
That's correct.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Subdivision passes. Moving on to the PUD. Again, recommended for approval with fourteen conditions listed. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question of the staff first. We're not, I'm not seeing any findings of facts. I don't know if we've got a bad printout or not.
You are correct. There are two issues here. One, here are some recommended findings of fact. Proposal promotes the objective of creative design because it allows for the configuration of a site to meet housing needs. B promotes the objective of efficient land use because of utilizing infill development practices. C, environment, the project does not eliminate any existing urban amenities or natural features, and the existing neighborhood fabric is retained. And D, public services, because no new public infrastructure must be constructed to develop the site as planned. Also, on the city engineering comments, Mr. Davis graciously pointed out that we had inserted his subdivision comments on the PUD. I believe the applicant is in agreement with it, but here are the PUD comments, and I'm going to summarize. Any work performed in the existing right-of-way will require a permit in compliance with code. Land disturbance applications shall be submitted for any proposed land disturbance activity within the property and the completion, complete sets, et cetera. Will conform with Chapter Seventeen and rules for erosion and sedimentation control. Each lot owner D will be required to submit the single-family residential affidavit. E, proposed detention facilities shall be maintained as constructed and approved. F, approval of all applicable federal, state, and local agencies for stormwater runoff and securing necessary permits and approvals. G, the proposed development comply with all engineering department design requirements and policy letters.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, make a motion if you're entertaining.
I just heard a motion. I didn't hear the word after that.
Are you, are you ready for a motion on the PUD?
Yes, we'll entertain a motion on the PUD.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of fact B and D.
And we need to edit comments one and two, correct?
That is correct.
They match, they match the comments on one and two.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with findings of fact. I believe it said D and E, and then amendment to comments one and two under the conditions.
Second.
Properly, properly moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. The motion for the PUD passes. See, the rezone from R1 to R2? Recommended for approval? Subject to the conditions.
A move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded? Any discussion on the rezone, R1 to R2? Call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. The motion to rezone passes. Agenda Item Eight, 162 and 186 East Drive, recommended for tentative approval with a litany of conditions. Applicant was in agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I've got to recuse myself in this vote.
Thank you, Scott. You are recused. We should still have a quorum with Ms. Denson present. Entertain a motion. We'll take them separately. Excuse me. We'll take them separately.
On the subdivision, I'll move to approve, subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for the subdivision of 162 and 186 East Drive? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes for the subdivision. Moving on to the PUD. Again, recommended for approval with findings of fact and twenty-one conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting of findings of fact B and D and requiring a note to not allow, or condition to not allow any runoff to Center Drive.
Second.
Direct toward Center Drive. B and D.
Properly moved and seconded? Any further discussion on Agenda Item Eight for the PUD? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Margaret, do we have any further business today?
Yes, sir. We need election of officers. We're going to do it on time this year.
I think she's waiting for someone to nominate someone. This one's not scripted, so.
All right.
I thought we did just do this, but-
We're supposed to do it every January, and we were kind of tardy last time.
But we had, we had vacancies on the commission, et cetera, and so, yes, while we've only had this seated for two months, we are, it's a new year, and we're trying to be punctual.
You want them individually? You want them individually, or would you like them one, one nomination at one time? All right, I'd like to nominate Ms. Jennifer Denson for secretary, Mr. Allen for vice-chairman, and Mr. Jay Stubbs for chairman.
Properly moved and seconded? Any discussion up here? We'll probably have some more of that. Probably moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The election of officers passes. Right. On behalf of the planning commission, I'd like to wish all of you a Happy New Year. Be safe. And at this time, we will plan on meeting in person January 20th, unless further notified. Meeting adjourned.